Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 11th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. The Board of Education is meeting remotely in accordance with Section 6 of the Illinois Executive Order issued on March 16th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Law Day.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Monzel.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Rolowitz.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Savage William.
Here. Thank you.
And Board, I'd like to explain because normally somebody being in the audience, but you may recognize or see a face here besides echoes of one of our students. Karmia Beatty is our newest elected member to the Board. And she's actually going to be sworn in later on, but I thought I'd maybe make an introduction and explain to everybody her presence.
Thank you.
Welcome, Karmia.
Thank you.
Right, very, very cool. Thank you for being here. All right. Our first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
Well, we have a first. Today, the Board of Education received a letter from members of the ETHS Sustainability Committee. Board members, you are in possession of that letter in your email.
Okay.
And there is no further written communication at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we're already at information items. The first item is the district financial update in wake of COVID-19. And I believe Mary is going to lead us for us. Where did you go?
Hello, Board. Sorry, Eric, did you want to say something?
No, I didn't. I'm on an iPad, so I have to keep scanning back and forth, everybody. So just ignore my movements. I have to move it so I can see all of you.
Okay. Well, I guess it takes a virtual meeting for me to be up first, so I'm enjoying my place in the list. So I don't have any slides or anything tonight, but this is sort of a bridge between, I would say, some things that Gretchen brought up at the last meeting and then our next meeting in June, which will be a full-blown budget approval for the tentative budget. And I will be showing you some visuals, then we'll have a little bit longer presentation. But I really just wanted to talk about some of the things that have been going on and a lot of the things that you've probably already heard in various circles. I've tried to sit in on as many webinars, seminars, Zoom calls, Google Hangouts as I could, just so I could hear what all of the different organizations are saying, not just my financial peers. So I did put together a memo for you. I'll go through just some of the high points and low points, I guess, if you will, in that memo. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. There's nothing for you to approve tonight. This was really just an update so that we could talk about what we're seeing and thinking and hearing. Couple of things I wanted to focus on. State funding, as far as we know so far, the evidence-based funding, which we've talked about a lot and replaced the old general state aid. Those payments have been on track and on time, and that's typically what we see every year. Just so you know, the revenue is about $3 million to the district every year in that category. We do think that that will be on track for this year, but that is one of the big things that has been a point of discussion for next year because in order for us as a Tier 4 district to receive our flat funding, and I mean flat, we were held harmless a couple of years ago, so we've not really seen much more, but we haven't seen much less in this evidence-based funding. In order for that to continue, the state has to fund a minimum amount. And as you've all heard, there's a pretty big shortfall forecasted for the state finances. So if they fail to fund that base minimum, the other, the schools in Tier 4 would lose funding first and then Tier 3, and typically Tier 1 and 2 are those schools that were most in need when this funding started. And so they would get the most, and they would get all of it if the minimum's not met. So we're keeping an eye on that. We're expecting that maybe the state will make some announcements as we get closer to the end of this fiscal year. But we're still kind of waiting. This year looks good on that, though. The other categorical state aid is lagging a bit, but that's not unusual. We typically would see one more payment. This is for some of the categorical payments, like special ed, different types of special ed payments. Some of those are rolled into evidence-based funding. But the ones that we do still get, we typically see one more categorical payment this fiscal year. We have not heard that we're not going to get that, so we're still hopeful. So I would say for the most part, those other state revenues are on track. I think I mentioned local revenues last meeting. Those are primarily property taxes. And fortunately, Cook County tax bills had already come in. And so we feel like the property tax revenue should be pretty close. They're might be pretty close to what we budgeted. There might be a few lagging payments, but generally, if, you know, the property taxes, especially in this area, have been pretty resilient because a lot of homeowners escrow their taxes, and so those taxes do get paid on time. Even when we saw a lot of foreclosures back in 2009, 2010, typically, the banks do keep up those property tax payments. So in general, those local property tax revenues, which is by far the biggest source of our revenue, those payments are usually pretty downturn resistant, I would say. Our federal revenues quickly are also generally on track. One thing that I did mention in the memo, we know that our federal lunch and actually our breakfast revenues will fall below what we expected in the budget. And that's because in mid-March, we changed up how we are doing that program. We're providing the meals and packing all of those meals. District 65 is transporting them, and the city is distributing them. So they will be filing the lunch claims for those breakfasts and lunches. And then we are billing them for the full cost of the meals. So that is ongoing, and we will continue that process through the end of what would have been the regular end of school. And then we're starting to have some discussions about how the summer will look as far as meals. One thing I just wanted to mention is, of course, we're having a lot of students turning to counselors and student services regarding career planning and placement. Our graduating students are trying to enter a workforce that is one like none of us have ever seen, really. So in order to try and help facilitate that, we knew that there would be some Title I spending, which is federal dollars, by the way, those are federal dollars. So we did file an amendment to reduce some of the funding for Wildkid Academy sessions. We knew those couldn't be held. And some professional development funds that are typically in Title I. And the funds were approved to be redirected through the federal, through the Title I federal process, to be redirected through Career Planning and Placement Services with some of our community partners. Anytime we do significant budgeted transfers like that, we do bring those to the Board on an annual basis. So we'll be doing that a couple more meetings down the road. But I just wanted to make you aware of that need and some of the reductions and needs for the in-person Wildkid Academy funding. We're also hopeful that the federal grants will allow us to carry over more unused funds than we usually do. Typically, there's about a 15% carryover. If you don't spend in one year, you can add it into your next year, Title I, Title II. We're hoping, we haven't heard yet, but we're hoping that those carryovers will be a little bit larger because we do expect to underspend in those areas. Just a couple more things. I mentioned already that most of the districts in Cook County are expecting their revenues to be on track, especially in the northern half where property tax collections are pretty robust. We did have, I jumped onto a meeting with Pete and the academic department heads to make sure that they're being really conservative in what they purchase at the end of the year. And just because things have been budgeted in departments and revenues will be healthy doesn't mean that they have to spend every dollar. In fact, some of the meetings I've been on, you know, some of the experts have recommended not stockpiling back-to-school needs because we don't really know what that is going to look like. So I've asked all the department heads to make sure that they order what they need to order and anything, you know, that may have been depleted, that they would have normally ordered now as far as departmental supplies, to please do that. But that there will be time to, once we know a little bit more about how things are progressing, will be time for them to order additional items later in the late spring and summer. So we think that that will cause the finances overall, the revenue should come in pretty close to budget, and the expenditures will probably be under. I did mention in the memo a few things that we know we're experiencing already costs related to the pandemic, things like mobile hotspots, which are required to come with a one-year service contract, IIT other expenses, you know, things like Zoom upgrades and a few different types of IT subscription-type expenses. We know that we have to do some additional summer curriculum planning, just kind of for the what-ifs and the continuation of some of the courses and how that will look. We're also adding some additional summer school salaries to help have additional staff on hand in all the core areas to help students with learning. And some additional paraprofessionals and the credit recovery process will be robust for the summer as well. So we do have, you know, some areas that we weren't anticipating spending in, but we also think there will be many areas where we'll underspend. We have been notified that we have $289,000 in the CARES Act funding. And we also have opened an account on the FEMA reimbursement website to be looking for reimbursements for things like those mobile hotspots or additional salary expenses and anything that FEMA will allow to be part of that reimbursement process. We'll be seeking that. So really, that's it. Just like I mentioned, we'll be coming back in June. Between now and then, I'll be trying to pull out that crystal ball and figure out what's going to happen next year. The good thing is we come back in September to do the final budget. So anything that isn't clear in June should be hopefully clearer by then, and we can build a more exact budget based on that. I think that's about all I wanted to say. We're just keeping an eye on revenues and trying to figure out what could be at risk for next year. And then also try to be really conservative as we budget for next year with so many unknowns. Eric, I'm not sure if there's anything you wanted to add, but that's about all I have.
I actually am just going to thank you, Mary. Mary and I always work closely. We've been like this.
We also happen to seem to be in the office at the same time, but Eric's always in the office, so.
But I just saw you again today, and it was great. Yeah, I feel that Mary's assessment is a good one. That is, we have been, you know, allocating some monies in a different way because of COVID, while at the same time, certain things we would have expended in normal circumstances were not expending. And so I also think that and the care money, you know, clearly, I think we're going to end this year fine, to say the least. But that's okay because that gives us a little bit of wiggle room as we face the unknown in the coming year.
Thank you. Gretchen, question?
Yeah, thanks. So I'm interested in hearing a little bit, Mary. If, I think the concern right now relates to the fact that the EBF funding, it's not going to be anywhere near the 300 million that's supposedly appropriated. I think there's going to be, there's some real worry that that's not going to materialize. And as a result, then, there's under discussion, a lot of different models about how that's going to look. And IASBO has one model that's been developed in conjunction with some of the people who put together the original EBF framework. But then I think the more worrying model is the ISBE version, or at least one of their versions, because that involves a potential clawback, going back to money that's already been distributed to Tier 4 districts, going back to 2017. And that could be very threatening for a district like ours, who are, you know, fortunate enough to be in that Tier 4 category. So what's your thinking around that? Do you have any insight? I mean, I think that's probably the biggest concern.
Yeah.
One of many.
Yeah, one of many. Thanks for mentioning that. Before I tell you what I think, let me mention that was a great segue that I did not even ask Gretchen to give me. But one of the things I'll be showing you next meeting, which is not something we've done before, is we're in the, I'm in the process with our financial forecasting software of developing like four different models of, you know, quick recovery, really slow recovery, worst-case scenario, and like where we were if none of this had happened. And so I'll have a visual for you, which has been, they've had some similar things in some of the presentations, might be one of the ones you're referring to. But it's literally a graph that goes across and shows where we'd end up in worst-case scenario. And some of the worst-case scenario includes things still, like the pension cost shift that we've been hearing about for a while, and even the property tax freezes. But there also is some component to that of what would happen with EBF. And so I'll have some forecast for you, just so we can look at those next meeting. But I think the answer is it sort of depends on who you ask. And what I'm hearing in more of my financial counterpart circles are opinions that say, we know that there's a clause in evidence-based funding that says, yes, we'll hold you harmless if, as long as the minimum base funding is kept. So, you know, for us, best-case scenario is that we would continue to get something close to what we've been getting in evidence-based funding. And I think worst case is, not only would it go away, but there's this scary thought that they could pull back some of the revenues that we've gotten in the last few years. I think in the financial circles, my counterparts and some of our financial advisors have said, if you were to go so far as to try to take money back from school districts, that would really be, and I realize it's the Tier 3s and the Tier 4s and the ones who are considered the wealthier districts, but to try and go backwards and pull money back would really be devastating to a lot of districts. So I think that the thought is, things would have to be really horrible for that to even be considered. We're hopeful with the governor that we have, that he understands what an impact that would have on all of us. What I will say, though, is for me, worst-case scenario is, this is part of the rainy day reason that we've built healthy fund balances. We have a board policy, we're well within that board policy of, you know, fund balance that really, in simple terms, is a rainy day fund to carry us four to five months' worth of spending. So, you know, I think that the worst case is, I don't think that that type of pullback would be sprung on us. But if it were, that's why districts need to maintain healthy fund balances. We'd have to deal with it. If they literally said, you have to write a check to the state, we'd have to do that. And that fund balance allows us the time to then pull together a disaster budget for us. I mean, that's when you really have to start talking about uncomfortable cuts. And let me just say one more thing, and then I'm done, Gretchen. The other source for us is if you remember the Board, we had a 1.5, about $1.5 million expected in additional TIF funds. And we pledged to use that for capital as long as that was feasible and worked well for the district. So we do have about $1 million of that, that we could pull back from future capital plans and divert to operating. So, sorry, go ahead, Gretchen.
No, no, not at all. That was all extremely useful, and I was happy to hear your insight. I think that there's still a very real concern from a legislative perspective, and I'm talking about from, you know, within the EdRed, from the perspective of those who are in Springfield, talking to the legislators. There, you know, I think this potential clawback is looming. I mean, I wouldn't, I appreciate your insight, but I think it's not just that we can put off thinking about that worst-case scenario. I think now is the time to think about that. And I love the idea that you are pulling together those PMA projections. And by the way, that's not what I was referring to. I was referring to, the ISBE has put together, it was, the EdRed has a nice, in their newsletter, collection of the links to the PowerPoint that ISBE did, and also, I think, the IASBO presentation. And so it's a little different from the PMA stuff, I think.
Okay, I'll check that out. I was on the EdRed call, I think it was a week ago today.
Yeah.
And I'll check out that.
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll resend it to everybody.
Okay.
Because it was in the Florida the Door newsletter, the links. And I, you know, I think we're doing all the right things. And I also loved your point about the fund balance, by the way, because that's something that state legislators don't seem to understand at all, that it's important to have that fund balance. And I hope that this crisis has put that idea to rest. You know, it's not just having an old, crumbly building, which we do. You need that fund balance for a whole bunch of different reasons. And, you know, this is really the perfect example. So I think that's a terrific point. I really appreciate your thinking around that as well.
I totally agree with that. We're not only for these reasons, but I think, I can't remember what the date is, but Lake County has some processes in place where they're considering splitting their two property tax payments into four. And so if Cook County decides to do something like that in the fall, that's another reason that fund balance is really important because you have to use that savings account to ride out until your next set of revenues come in.
And I think there, you know, there definitely is talk about potential for abating those payments and that. I mean, for districts that rely, like we do, almost exclusively on property tax revenue, that would be very devastating.
Definitely.
And it would probably, it would hit us quickly. It would hit us quickly and hard.
Especially if that were to come in in combination with some news about the evidence-based funding. You know, those two, that could definitely be a one-two punch. So we're going to try to keep that fund balance as healthy with the year-end this year as we can. And every time information gets solidified, just trying to really consider that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions? I think that certainly all the work and attention we've paid to the budget and trying to make sure that we do have a healthy budget over the years. I mean, this is like the worst nightmare. Who would have ever guessed that we would have been here? And this is the time to really consider the worst-case scenario because we are really faced with the possibility of looking at the worst-case scenario. And while I recognize that we don't know what's around the corner, and it's literally just around the corner, I think most of us anticipate that it's going to not be good. It can't be. Look at the economy, look at all the people in our community who are struggling and out of work. And so it's pretty devastating. So I really, really appreciate getting this information now to help us be informed for what we're going to see in June and then to sort of, I don't know, if we can be ready for what's going to come from the state. But at least we can start anticipating. Those models will be very helpful to help us plan and think and anticipate.
I agree.
I think what I appreciate is that Mary is looking at several different models.
Yes.
Because this is how COVID is.
Yes.
We absolutely don't know. From the moment we get off of this call, guidelines, protocols, everything could change. So the fact that, and I am not the financial whiz or expert here, but what I picked up on is that she has spent time in different environments gathering as much information as she can to determine the best possible models. And what that means to me is that, you know, the homework is being done and all that will be shared, you know, when she develops this. I, you know, again, I guess maybe I'm just too deep in it, but to have, you absolutely have to look at it 50 different ways and figure it out and have a different model just in case this happens.
Yeah.
Or just in case that happens. And the one thing she mentioned was quick recovery. I keep going back to that. You know, what does it look like if we open and have to shut down again? We can't shut down, no one can shut down the same way they shut down in March. It would be detrimental even more so. So all that has to be taken into consideration. And, you know, I'm just picking up on stuff that I'm hearing other experts talk about and hearing her say, so I'm just like that. I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you keep track of all that, Mary. Like, you have to, and I don't. But it's a lot. It's head spinning. It really is, so. That's what I heard.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, we always joke around with Mary, her late-night 30 slides. And, but we always say thank you at the end, but this is why. This, what we're going through, that none of us could have ever anticipated, is here. And you didn't know it was coming, Mary, and yet we're doing what we need to do now. And you're making plans so that, you know, if the tidal wave hits in August or it's only a smaller wave, or it's whatever it is, you have done all the work over the long term to get us there. And enough cannot be said and enough thanks cannot be thrown your way because that is, you have done the work. We're this great district. We are in good shape, and everybody, you know, can sit back and say, great, we're a great, you know, we're in great shape. But Mary, you have always paid attention to what if, and this is what if, and we're okay, and our kids are okay, and we owe you so much thanks for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, there will be some bumps, but I'm really, I'm glad that we started this process in really healthy shape because I think you'll all see that it's worth the scrutiny that we sometimes take about, you know, like Gretchen mentioned, there's been some scrutiny even at the state level about, you know, fund balances. But I think that we'll all see that those were really smart decisions on behalf of the Board to support that process that we asked you to support with fund balance levels. I think that it was smart to commit TIF money to capital while we can. And then if we can't, there's another source that we can move over. We've been trying to really take care of some really needed projects so that if we needed to then change how we spend that money, we can change that in the future. And, you know, I think you'll see when we try to estimate some of these different scenarios, I might be able to just, I'm going to try and see if I can just share. Oh, I can't share because this is probably a public meeting. I'm not, I don't have the same access. But I have one sample slide that showed those four different scenarios that a district did for a presentation I was in, just a slideshow. And, you know, their fund balance is everywhere from just a normal, healthy range to kind of tanking. And it's not exact, but I think that if we consider the things that could happen and kind of build our projections around it, we can hopefully come out somewhere in the middle. So be prepared for like 30 slides in June.
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Board, are there other questions? We ready to move on? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you again, Mary. All right, we're comments from the public, public comments. We asked public to submit comments in writing prior to the meeting, and we gave them the email and the time for submission. Dr. Beavis, everybody keeps moving around here. There you are. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment this evening.
Okay, great. Okay, great. All right. The next item is FOIA. We didn't have any FOIAs either, did we?
No, there are no FOIAs this evening.
All right. Okay. So we're at our action items. Okay, so for the organization of the board, I'm going to, call for a motion with a roll call vote to be made to retire the board. Senae DA, um, could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Sorry, I got to unmute myself. Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
To Terich.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Davis, would you please assume the role of President Pro Tem?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. At this time, uh, I'd like to call the meeting back to order and ask for a roll call vote.
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell. Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
To Terich.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, now I'm going to explain to you what we're going to do next. We're going to take nominations for the Office of President, Vice President and Secretary. Nominations need not be seconded. Each nomination will be voted in order of their nomination. And once a candidate receives a majority of votes of the board, four votes, the election process is over. I'm going to call in my role for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education, a one-year term. Nominations, please.
I would like to nominate, uh, Pat Savage Williams in recognition of her excellent service over these last couple of years. And with gratitude, hoping she will take it on one more year.
Okay. Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing no other nominations for president, I'm going to call for a vote, a roll call vote.
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
To Terich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask that new president assume the chair and complete the nomination process for Vice President, Secretary and School Treasurer.
Thank you. So now I'd like to call for nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I'd like to nominate Monique Parsons for her commitment to the board and her valuable experience that she's given us over the years.
All right. Thank you. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nomination and call for a vote for Vice President. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
To Terich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Thank you. Now I'd like to call for nomination for the Office of Secretary of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I think the Board can just name, uh, Dr. Davis to that position.
Okay, that would be great. We, we would love to do that.
I, I don't want to have to take anything off his job description.
It might be because nobody else wants the job.
No, you're not supposed to say that.
I told him it was a great honor.
It is a great honor.
A great honor.
So the Board will name Dr. Davis to that position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And, um, so also, um, I'll call for a motion to nominate Mary Rodino as School Treasurer of the Board of Education for a one-year term with a compensation of $1,000. And once again, the Board can name Mary to that position.
Although I would, you should do a roll call vote on this one, though.
Okay, because of that.
Since you're trusting her with the money.
Okay. Yes, we are trusting her with the money. All right. Could we, do we need a motion?
Yes, someone should make a motion.
I'm happy to make the motion. I move that we appoint, uh, Mary Rodino as the Board Treasurer.
Thank you. All right. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
To Terich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Thank you. So that completes the organization of the board and the election of officers. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the following resolutions. Can we just do these all together?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution ratifying acts, contracts, policies and bylaws. Resolution designating signatory. Resolution regarding check signatures. Resolution ratifying approved depositories. Resolution establishing regular meeting dates and place. And resolution establishing dates to review close session minutes. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
I can't.
Roll call, please.
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
To Terich.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Thank you. So now we're at review of student election and oath of office for student board representative.
Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to, uh, make, uh, one small recommendation, and that is that we first, uh, honor, uh, our outstanding student rep Echo Allen first. And then I'll read the resolutions declaring the results of the election and administer the oath of office, if that's okay.
That makes total sense. All right. I'll open it up to Board members. Would anybody like to get us started?
I would. I didn't really prepare any extensive remarks, um, but I, I at least want to get your name right, Echo, and not call you by your sister's name, as I've done on at least one occasion, perhaps more. It, it, it is kind of cool that we have a family legacy here on the school board as represented by your presence here. But you're a different person completely than your, um, than your sister. And so I want to acknowledge your individuality and your wonderful, um, I, I don't know exactly how to say it, but your freshness, your enthusiasm and your consistently positive outlook, which I think has been really refreshing, especially since you've concluded your term as we've entered a pandemic. So, um, I appreciated, I think it was at the last meeting where you, you seemed as energetic as ever. And I really, really have to respect that, especially given that this is your senior year. So it's a weird, weird, weird way to end it. Um, and I'm so sorry about that. But, um, it's been a delight having you on the school board, sitting near me, um, for most of that time. So I, I really appreciate your hard work and I wish you the very best. And I hope when you start school next year, um, that it might be in person. So thank you.
Thank you. The comments.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, um, I think I might have even started my remarks about honor the same way, but I've actually known Echo since before she came to, um, elementary school at Kingsley, where our kids went, uh, my kids went together with, uh, Honor and Echo. And, um, I've had the opportunity to see her in different settings through the years, including at Camp Echo, working with young kids and really knowing how to do that in, in such a positive way, even in challenging times. And then to see her at, at HHS on the school board and just a natural leader and a natural ability to engage people, um, as Gretchen said, it, be enthusiastic and excite people. You're a very special young woman, Echo, and, um, you have been for a long time. We've seen it coming. Um, but really honored to see how you, um, filled the role of School Board Representative and as a leader at HHS. And let's be honest, it's hard to be a leader at HHS. There are a lot of really wonderful kids doing amazing things. And for you to be, uh, to stand out, um, is, is saying a lot, um, because you've got a lot of great people around you. And, and it seems to me like you thrive on that. Like you don't, you're so, um, you're so comfortable in the role. You don't need to be the superstar at the front. You're right there with all these other wonderful people doing wonderful things. And to me, that's the best leader of all, and I just can't wait to see what you do, um, going forward. So I wish you the very best. As, as Gretchen said, I hope you're, whatever campus you're going to, I hope you get to go there and, and enjoy it in person. Um, but even if you have challenges, I know you will rise, um, nonetheless. So thank you for all your great work and best to you always.
I'll go, Ben. Well, Echo, thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure sitting right next to you this past year and watching you in action. Thank you for your service to your school community and to the Evanston community. You've had a profound impact on me as an educator. I, I truly respect the way you were always ready, unapologetically, to ask the tough questions, which were always well thought out. And you've always asked them from an equity lens, which kind of gives me insight as to your character outside of the board meetings, because that's where I know you from. But it shows that, it shows your willingness to, uh, for the greater good of everyone. Like what you would like to see for yourself, you want others to achieve their dreams as well. And I think you're really reflective of what, of the best that Evanston has to offer in terms of what this community is putting out. And, um, if, uh, watching you, your character and, um, um, the way you handled yourself, at this significant table in this town, if it's any indication of, um, the seeds that we're planting, it, it gives me hope and it should give all of us hope. So thank you so much. It's been a pleasure and honor sitting next to you this past year, and I wish you well with all your endeavors. You'll, you're going to be a rock star.
Thank you, Jude. Anybody else? So Echo, I just want to close by saying, um, that I agree with all that has been said. You have been amazing as a School Board Representative, and I would often, uh, forget that you were a student because of what you shared and how you shared and, and how deeply you would think through some of these issues that you would, we would all grapple with. You were right there with us. You were right there thinking and looking at the slides and, and you came prepared. Um, and you've just been amazing. Your questions, your comments have always kind of blown me away, like, wow, and that's a student. So I, I think about what's, what's ahead for you. Um, I'm not worried about, well, I'm worried about the, what condition will be in, in the fall, but I'm not worried about your ability to handle what happens in the fall. Because whatever condition the university will open under, you will be fine. And you will be a leader, because you've already shown us your capacity to do that. And you've been very thoughtful and very impressive, and you've represented a student body of so many perspectives. And you're able to come in and share those perspectives and, and guide us to think deeply about students in such a respect, respectful way. So thank you so much. It's really been great getting to know you and serving with you. I will look forward to hearing some of the amazing stories about your future.
Can I, can I add?
Of course.
Well, Echo, I agree with everything. You probably know what I'm about to say. But she is our opening lifeguard at the YMCA, and anyone that has the dedication to show up before 5:00 AM and open is amazing.
Yeah.
She'll be a full-time student. So, um, yeah, I, I always get excited when I get to see students outside of, um, boardwork or, um, the high school, and I see how they move in the community, um, and the other things that they do. That just strikes me to my core, because it definitely just speaks to their commitment and their dedication. And it also reinforces, not only does she come from good stock, but she also has a school that, um, has been, you know, really just pouring into her. So I don't know, 5:00 AM, I don't know, the pool probably won't be open for another year anyway. If I could be honest, but I appreciate your dedication, um, outside of this continuum, just everything that you, you do that we don't see. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again, Echo. Go ahead, Echo.
Um, great. Uh, okay. Um, first I would like to say thank you for the, I got the little crystal paperweight in the mail from the school board, um, which was very exciting. And, um, now I can put it next to Honor and get there. So, um, I would also like to say a huge thank you to the staff, um, boosters and student activities for organizing the yard sign delivery to seniors today. It was a complete surprise, um, and just was really amazing for all of the seniors. This year has been such an exciting and informative year because of the opportunity to work with so many students and community members doing important and inspiring work. Quickly like to acknowledge the projects and the folks I've been lucky to work with, um, and on. And I'm proud to call these amazing people my collaborators and friends. The first thing is the Witherbell Forum, which had its fourth year anniversary this year, um, which in high school terms is, is a lot of years. Um, since I've worked on it since freshman year, Student Union has continued to explore like better ways to include the student voice in our evolving student body. And it's an important time for students to have conversations with our school, with each other, with administrators, and it inspires the work that Student Union does all year long. The Evanstonian has given me the opportunity to connect with students every month in a column. And our goal was to make students more aware and connected to the work that I do and Student Union does, which was a joy to write with my vice rep, Isaac Levin. Isaac Levin, who is or was, I guess, the Vice President of the Student Union, um, and the members of the TARDI Policy Committee also made it so next year, students will go straight to class from their TARDI instead of having to hunt down a pass and conserve attentions in more accessible ways. Students, members and administrators in the Sustainability Committee have been tirelessly working to explore. Students, members, and administrators in the Sustainability Committee have been tirelessly working to explore ways EHS can respond to climate crisis and form a culture of sustainability. For example, they spearheaded the initiatives like composting at South Study Cafe. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being super awesome with that. Student activists in Etown Sunrise have been educating and motivating people in order to explore intentional and inclusive climate activism, which has been super cool to be a part of learning in that environment. And students organized events centered around understanding and consenting speech in the US and educating voters about primary elections. Although, like, you would think the pandemic would make community-based work harder, I've seen so much student and community-based collaboration. And luckily, I've been a member of the Work Institute, which is a mutual aid organization that is working with EHS alumni, current students, and community members. And we are a hub for supporting people with needs during COVID, like grocery donation and technology access outside of EHS support. Many students and families are contributing to these efforts and many others, which has been super amazing to see. And finally, you can look forward to next year, the Gender Equity Training, which will be run by students from IMerge, which is a student, like, club and Student Union, and it will be a training for EHS teachers to make more equitable environments and more intersectionally aware environments for students. Thank you, Mr. Palms, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Witherspoon, and everyone here on the Board for giving me the platform to imagine and contribute to this special community. It has seriously been my pleasure to be the student rep, and I'm so excited for Carmia. I know you will do amazing things next year. So, thank you.
Nice.
So we're clapping with muted, but we're clapping. All right. Okay, Dr. Beavis.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to read the resolution declaring the results of the student election. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, District 202, County of Cook, State of Illinois, that the returns from the student election held on May 8, 2020 in said high school district for the purposes of electing one student member and student alternative member of the Board of Education of said district to serve from May 11, 2020 to May 20, 2021 are as follows, and this is the order of of top votes, Carmia Beatty, Olamay Thomas, Suzel Autumn Anderson, Andrew Vi, Harley Ross, and Zoe Henke. Therefore, the Board of Education finding declares that the following are duly elected student members with the offices as specified below with the Board of Education to serve from May 11, 2020 to May 10, 2021. Carmia Beatty, student member, Board of Education. Olamay Thomas, alternative member, Board of Education. Now, this needs to be passed by the Board, so let's, uh, let's do that. Just to validate the resolution, we need to have that approved.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please?
Law Day?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mansell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage-Williams?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, at this time, I'm going to administer the student oath of office to Carmia. So you're going to like, you're going to raise your hand. We're going to try to do this. Ready? See my hand, you're going to raise your hand, and we're going to do this oath together. Ready? Are you, okay, great. I say your name.
I, Carmia Beatty.
A student member of the Board of Education.
A student member of the Board of Education.
Of Evanston Township High School.
Of Evanston Township High School.
District 202.
District 202.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office to which I have been elected.
Of the office to which I have been elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome officially, Carmia. Welcome.
I have a kiss to feel.
Yes. You do. All right, very good. So let's keep going here. Our consent agenda consists of approval of payments to transportation companies, approval of 2021 calendar and 2122 calendar draft, approval of prevailing wage resolution, approval of minutes from April 20, 2020, regular meeting, approval, I'm sorry, treasurer's report from March of 2020, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which consists of appointments to staff, certified support staff, nutrition services, summer school, change in status, overload, leave of absence, paternity, engineer, resignation certified, retirements certified, operations, release, nutrition services. Do I have a motion for approval?
And Madam President, there is an addendum, and it's appointments to staff administrator and certified.
Thank you. So there are approval with those addendum items. Do we have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Law Day?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mansell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage-Williams?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is old and new business. Are there any older, new business items that Board members would like to present? Okay, Gretchen?
The new business, I'm not sure, really. I just, I wanted to highlight, I had a, Eric and I were emailing today about students generally who are in distress, in particular financial distress. We always run into an issue at the end of the school year with some of our students who, for a variety of reasons, are unable to pay the fees necessary to graduate. And I think it's important for Eric to share, you know, more broadly that the high school has always historically been at the forefront of working with our students to make certain that we can do everything in our power to make sure those, those fees are paid. And in fact, Eric shared some information from Mary Rodino that I think it went to the whole Board and I just think it's worth highlighting it in, in sort of a public, I know this is a weird public venue, but on this meeting, so, so that people more broadly are aware of how we operate.
Oh, yeah, thank you. In a nutshell, we have always been available to help students and families if they are experiencing any kind of financial hardship or financial stress. And a lot of times, and usually, it becomes most urgent as they reach the end of their time here and, and the end of their senior year. And so I'll just remind students and families, if you have been experiencing that, your best first contact on that would be your counselor. But clearly, if you were to notify Dr. Campbell or myself, we would, we could get the wheels turning on, on taking a look at what the need is and how we might help. But again, your counselor would be your, your best bet on that. One of the things that's very important to recognize is this is something that we do all the way along the line. For anybody who fills out the federal forms and qualifies for the free reduced lunch, we already have in process a fee waiver process, and we waive all those standard fees. And, and it's a $25 a year fee for anybody who is already qualified as low income in, in our school. So that compares to $340, which is the normal fee, plus, you know, when you have extra things like a PE uniform or a heart rate monitor or something like that. But, but we really know that we want to meet the whole spectrum of our community. We want to meet the needs of all of our families. And so we've always been very vigorous about this, and we continue to be so. And again, if any, in particular senior right now is having any kind of hardships, they, they really need to reach out to their counselor and set a review of motion.
Great.
Thank you.
Good. Right. So, um, we are ready to close. Does anybody have anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Everybody's muted. Okay, we are officially adjourned. Thank you, be well, take care of yourselves.
Night.
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 Best wishes, Echo. Stay healthy.
Take care, Echo.